All right, well, it is six o'clock and we'll get started with our regular meeting. Welcome our viewers. It's always appropriate to start off with a roll call of the board members. So Margie, if you could do that.
Board member Blumrich.
Here.
Board member Cho.
Here.
Board member Fry.
Did we lose her?
Here, nope, I'm here. I was just muted, sorry.
Board member Snyder.
Here.
Board member Waters.
Here.
Vice President Brigham.
Here.
And President Owen.
Here. Thank you, Margie. Welcome, everybody, to our regular meeting. Our viewers, again, welcome. Want to also kind of give a shout out to our teachers this week as it's Teacher Appreciation Week. And as a fellow teacher, I just want to say, thanks for all that you do. But we have an agenda we've got to get through here and we hope that you have felt appreciated as the week has gone on. So anyway, to start off things, I want to make sure that we understand the rules of the game, so to speak, that we're going to do roll call voting as we have done in other remote meetings here. And so when I call off a board member's name, they'll just say yes or no in place of the yea or nay. And this should go fairly quickly. It doesn't look like there's a lot of action items in this meeting. We're going to reserve a lot of the time for our budget. So understanding resolutions are three items that I think that we can tackle at one time. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the minutes of the regular meeting for April 23rd. To approve the Student Activities Treasures Report from March, the March Report. And also to approve the Appropriation Status Report for March as well. So first, could we have a motion to approve those three items?
Motion.
Okay, motion Carol.
Second.
Second, was that Tom? No, I'm sorry.
Second.
All right, I think it was second Jeff. I don't know.
Yes.
Okay, thanks Jeff. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, starting with Carol?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jessie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And myself, I am a yes, so that those motions have carried. There is no personnel item on today's agenda. We're going to move that to our next meeting. So we can go on to business and finance. Of which are our two items. The first is to approve the seeker resolution for the 2020 capital outlay project. Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following seeker resolution relating to the 2020 capital outlet project is approved. Indicating that it's dated May 7th, 2020. It declares the district's proposed capital outlet project and that it's improvements to the middle school building. And to have type two action under the seeker in authorizing and directing the inclusion of funding for such project in the district's proposed 2021 budget. So if we could have a motion?
Motion.
Motion Carol? Was that second from you, Tom?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? If if either Hank or Andy would like to kind of give some specifics or just to give a background so the public can hear, that would probably be useful. So I, go ahead Hank.
Sure, Andy, do you want to tackle the language? Would you like me?
Sure, the seeker resolution just declares what type of work is going to be completed as part of the 2020-2021 capital outlet project. It's an environmental type resolution in which it just states the type two, which is there's no adverse impact to the environment.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the public heard that. And also in here, I mean, it saved me some time of reading a couple pages worth, so I appreciate it. It says this resolution will shall take place or effective immediately. So could we have our, we've already kind of had the motions. Is there any further discussion? Okay, so all in favor, starting with Carol?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jessie? I think there's a delay there, at least from my end. Jessie, was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I am a yes. That motion has carried. The second thing, under our business and finance, is to approve the professional service agreement from the Bella Associates for Design Services. That is resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Could we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion Tom?
Second.
Second Carol? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, starting with Carol?
Yes.
Carrie? Did we lose Carrie? We'll come back, I guess. Sarah?
Yes.
Jessie?
Yes.
Jeff?
No.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Is Carrie, Carrie's back in? Looks like she has rejoined if someone could.
Yeah, sorry, my dogs went crazy because there was a rabbit outside and it was a little bit chaotic.
Did you, did you hear the, we all just voted on approving the professional services agreement from the Bella Associates for design services. So we just need your vote if that's a yes or a no.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. So that motion is carried, six to one. All right, thank you. The next, well, on our agenda, it has board items. Obviously, there's not going to be a ton of board items that are specific to committees or anything like that due to our, due to the pandemic. So is there any board member that has an update that needs to be given? We'll give this time for that.
I have a suggestion.
Sure.
After talking about things with board member Cho this afternoon, Carrie, we thought that given, you know, these unprecedented circumstances and that our decision making at the board level is becoming more and more complex, we would like to propose that we we as a board meet sometime before the June board meeting. And we'd like to use the meeting to reflect on the current school year as well as for board development in anticipation of the challenges that lay ahead of us. And I also think it'd be well timed, given that we have our annual board retreat on June 25th. Where we'll be setting goals for the 2020-21 school year. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Is there a specific date that you would like to propose where we can break out our calendars and get that set up?
I don't have one, but I'd be, you know, before the June board meeting.
Well, I suppose we can table it for email if you'd like. Or we can have Margie pull us and we can kind of weigh in. Does that sound like a plan?
Sure, I mean, at the board's preference, you know, before the, you know, before the budget vote or before the June board meeting, whatever, you know, we as a board felt would be proper.
I feel like none of our schedules are very booked right now.
Right, later on today or?
Well, I just feel like, you know, sooner rather than later, because when things open up, we're not going to want to be spending them in meetings.
Yeah.
Want to get out.
Right, I think that sooner than later, right?
Do we have a date like next week?
Yeah, let me, let me break out my phone here and is there a time, first of all, is there a time that works best for everybody? Like, you know, after dinner, like six o'clock, would that be the best time?
It is for me.
It will be for me as well, actually. So, you know, I
Any day next week is really good for me. So, six o'clock, it sounds a good, good time as well.
The only day I can't for sure is Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesdays, Tuesday's iffy with me and Thursday I cannot.
Shoot for Wednesday?
Sure.
Sounds good.
We can, I'm going to pencil that in for me. I may have an issue, but right now I'll pencil it and I think I'm going to be okay.
And what are we calling this? A board of education?
Board development or?
Okay. Reflection meeting?
Yeah, reflection.
Is this open to the public or is this a time for us?
Good question, Carol.
I think this is more like, more like that development like we did that Saturday when we were all together.
Like a retreat type of thing or?
Yeah.
Yeah, like it's just like a general discussion.
Develop, staff development only, board development?
Yeah, get our thoughts together before, you know, before we meet in June for our annual, you know, our official retreat.
Yeah, and obviously, we're going to be doing that with a Google Hangout.
No, we're going to do that in person. And just stay six feet apart from everybody.
Okay, so that's a suggestion that's, where, okay, I'm glad you mentioned that. Where's the meeting place?
We can make certain that the media center is open. We have evening staff on.
Okay. I've got it, I've got it marked down. So, all right, that sounds like it's in the works. It looks like the next thing, was, first of all, was there any other board items that we needed to discuss? That was obviously a big one. And I'm sure that our meeting will be able to kind of hash some other things out if things come up, but in the public interest in terms of board updates of what we've done, is there anything that needs to be brought up?
I have a, I don't know if it's really an update, but I think a big thing should go out to Colleen Albee who, I don't know how many of you know about it, but yesterday, five different seniors were photographed and are going to be spotlighted into the Buffalo News for different accomplishments, different categories representing Roy Hart, and she organized all that, so.
Oh, very good. Well, thanks, Colleen, and any other, any other personnel around you?
I'm sure there's other people involved too, but Colleen was the direct contact for me, so.
Yeah, okay, well, thanks for bringing that up. We, yeah, we definitely like to celebrate. Is there any other celebrations or any other items?
Is there a, do they have a date for when that's going to be on the website or in print?
I don't know. He just took the pictures yesterday and I know he's spotlighting kids from all over Western New York. So I don't know how long it'll take him to compile all that.
I think they may be doing that as part of their annual recognition. Typically, there's a, we recognize the top three students through an award ceremony. That won't be happening, but I think they're trying to feature students from all walks of lives and trying to celebrate some of the seniors. And I don't believe there's a date been set yet.
So one of the things that I miss, besides meeting in person, is the celebrations and the certificates and stuff that the students get. It's, you know, I think that's what we all enjoy most about our coming together and celebrating, but these students, are we going to be showcasing them, highlighting their successes at our next meeting? Is that the intention?
I could certainly have Gary bring that together. The information came to me and I forwarded to Colleen and Gary to generate the names and then what their experiences were. So I'll make sure they have that prepared for next meeting.
Okay. All right, is there any other items of board discussion? All right, the last thing that I have before I turn it over to Hank is just the policy. It's a first reading, we've done the first reading of policy 5676, which is the privacy and security for student data and teacher and principal data. We'll need to make sure that we look at that as a second read and possibly put it into policy at our next meeting. If necessary, but certainly make sure we're looking at that policy as it's going to relate to responsibilities that may be dictated coming up. Other than that, I think we can turn it over to you, Dr. Stupinski, for your, for our information from you.
Sure, thank you very much. In addition to the Teacher Appreciation Week, over the course of the last 10 days or so, nurses appreciation, school principal appreciation. I want to give a big shout out to the entire staff here in Roy Hart. We start to think back about what we've had to accomplish in the last eight weeks from clearing our schools out, sanitizing them, transferring to remote learning, preparing food for distribution. All members of this community have really rallied around this difficult time for us and I want to share my true appreciation for every member of the staff that's out there. Few other updates. We're in the process right now of closing out the school year. It's important for the community to realize that our buildings are closed, but learning has not stopped. Learning is expected to continue for all of our students. The last official day for students will be Friday, June 12th. Principals have been reaching out to each of the buildings to pick up personal belongings. There's been schedules that have been set to try and promote social distancing. Remind students and families, when you do arrive, please remain in your cars and keep your spacing as materials are being picked up. If you happen to be with a larger group, please be careful of that. I also received some communication from the community today about trying to organize an evening of pickup as well. As some folks are in fact working during the day and won't be able to do that. So I'll be asking the principals to establish one evening after 6:00 PM so that materials can be picked up as well. Technology and district-wide materials are going to be picked up on June 15, 16, and 17. Again, we'll be hearing from your school principals about when you should report to return those items. Also want the community to know that the celebrations that we're used to at the end of the school year about moving up and awards and honors societies, all those are being organized and developed by the advisors of those groups and the building principals. You'll be receiving more information and that'll be done on a virtual basis. So we've been gathering pictures and images and those will certainly be taking place over the next month or so. A few updates on commencement. Under the current restrictions that have been placed on us by the governor's orders and Department of Health, specifically around social distancing with the COVID-19, we would not be able to run a commencement ceremony at this very minute. We have, in fact, have scheduled June 27th as a date for our normal commencement. It is not looking favorable for the commencement to take place on that day. I do want to thank Denise and Mario Starnelli, they're the owners of Sunset Drive. They have offered their facility on the 27th and we have set up a, we'll call it a rain date of July 25th to be able to hold the ceremony. We're hoping that sometime in the next two months, things will open up that we can actually bring together our students. In the event that that's not possible on June 27th or July 25th, we are going to be developing a digital version of the ceremony. We'll have all the speakers and the commencements and we're going to organize it so that our students can have a videotape of them coming across the stage. Just in the event that we're not able to be allowed to come together as a social gathering. This is consistent across the county. I met with the superintendent this past Tuesday and we're all in the same boat. I feel for all the parents and the families as a father and had gone through two commencement. That was a lot of work. That diploma was earned by my wife and I, almost as much as our sons were. So I do feel for you and students, please know that we are working hard to try to create that celebration for us. Budget votes and board elections this past Friday, under the last executive order, we will be holding our election on June 9th. The June 9th, there's going to be an absentee ballot that'll be mailed to all qualified voters. Want to remind all the voters that we must have in hand by 5:00 PM on June 9th, all of the ballots, if you're interested in placing your vote on the budget. There'll be a second item about the creation of two reserve funds and there'll be the library vote. And then there'll also be those members that have expressed interest in serving on the school board will be voted on as well. It'll all be in mail-in absentee ballot formats. There will be a public hearing on the budget on May 28th at 6:00 PM. That will be live streamed through this format that we're currently experiencing. And then finally, a couple of updates around construction. One of the things that have been allowed to happen on school grounds are the school construction. Work taking place right now in phase one of our capital project. Our high school pool filter has been removed. A new one is about to arrive next week and be installed, so we'll have a brand new filtration system. Work has been taking place in our maintenance garage right now to bring that up to standards. If you drive to the east of the middle school, you're going to see substantial progress being made on our tennis courts in the parking area that'll be located below the field hockey area. And they're also beginning the preparation and staging for the work that'll be taking place at the high school. The playgrounds, sections of the roof will be replaced as well as an additional parking area down at the elementary school. So you'll be seeing a lot more activity over the next couple of weeks regarding those projects. The final phase of the DEC remediation will begin next week. You'll see them onsite as well. And we also have been in development stages of a capital outlay project that will be part of the budget vote as well. We can invest $100,000 a year to a capital project and we're going to be investing that at our middle school. We'll be upgrading the gym floor and the storage areas that are adjacent to it. So those are the updates on construction. Be happy to answer any questions from the board on any of those items or any other questions that you may have.
Do we have any choice or any say about mail-in ballots or, you know, if we can have onsite voting? Because for all the years that I've voted, there, social distancing would never have been an issue.
Margie, would you mind responding to that from your research?
I'm sorry, Sarah, I don't understand what your question is.
Do we have any voice in whether or not we can conduct our board, our budget vote in our board elections the same way we've always done it? Because whenever, we have no say.
No, it was a executive order from the governor, the governor came out like Friday at
Yeah.
in the afternoon, yep.
Yeah, that's unfortunate because we would have had plenty of space to do it.
I totally agree with you, yes.
I have a question regarding the ballots. They'll be mailed to our individual taxpayers, correct?
Well, we are in the process of, it's qualified voters, so to vote for in a school election, you don't have to be a registered voter. You just have to be a qualified voter, which is 18 years of age or older. Resident for at least 30 days prior and able to, able to read and write or something, very, very minimal. So we can definitely reach the registered voters by getting information from the county board of elections. However, it's the others that we're going to have to just make every effort that we can to reach them as well. Get information out there that if they don't receive one in the mail, that they are eligible to vote, to just simply contact me. And I'll make sure they get one, just like in, in years, if someone needs absentee ballot, they normally would have to fill out an application, but that's, that's actually been waived this year as well. They would just have to request one.
Okay. And how do we know how many voters are in each home?
We don't. We would know registered voters in each home. Qualified voters, we don't.
What, do you have? Well, let me ask this. When will the ballots be going out? And how, what kind of timeframe are we talking from the time a household receives a ballot? I know they have to be returned in hand by June 9th. But do we have a tentative date for when those ballots will go out?
Well, we can't actually develop a ballot until we
Budget is approved.
Budget, right, until we have a number. All the three propositions, they're all set. We need that number. So that's kind of what the first trigger would be. And then it would be a matter of getting everything printed. Your envelopes with, you know, you have your oath envelopes, you have your return envelope. You have the one that gets mailed. It's quite a process and we are looking into several different vendors to do this because as of last year, when I used the voter registration poll list, so that would be every registered voter in at least an area of county, there was a little over 5,100. So that's the minimum that we're going to have to mail, because then we will have to do any additional requests. So we're going to have to mail over 5,100. However, the turnout for the last couple of years for voters is anywhere from like 250 to 350 people, but we have to mail over 5,100.
And you have to also pay for the return?
We have to, we do, thank you Carol, yes, we have to include a postage paid envelope.
And this is all at district expense, correct?
Correct.
And your advice to voters would be, once they receive a ballot in the mail, if there's additional voters in their household, to contact the district office, at which point you would mail them out?
Yes, and actually, the first requirement that we have, and we already have this pretty much in the works, is we have to send a postcard out. Luckily, I'm taking upon myself to interpret it as households, just to get the word out. That way, we, just like our newsletter, just like our calendars, it goes to every household. And on it, it does say that it's by absentee ballot only. If you are, something along the lines like, if you're not a registered voter, but are a qualified voter, just to contact me. So we're going to get that information out as whichever way we can.
Thank you.
Okay, so like my house, we have four voter, four qualified voters. Am I going to get four separate envelopes and four separate return envelopes?
Quite possibly, yes. Definitely the return ones have to be separate because it includes an oath that the person has to sign. Depending on which vendor we end up going with, I don't know if they're going to have the ability to include household, like four ballots and four return envelopes in one envelope, you know, to one household gets one envelope there, but includes enough for four. I honestly, I I haven't even, this was like last Friday where this was just dumped on every district across the state and the chatter on various websites and chat rooms and so forth is just phenomenal and attorneys and, yeah, so we're I research it every day.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing, Margie. Your job is as everybody's is this year is you know, a lot different from what you're used to and
Yeah.
Very well.
Thank you.
Hank, was there more in your report?
That's all I got.
Okay, and then it seems the next portion would be dedicated to our budget discussion.
Okay.
So if you want to start us off with that and lead us off, that would be great.
Sure, Andy, if you mind loading that for us and making opening comments?
Yep, I'll put it up there in a second.
Andy and I are going to kind of tag team this one here. I'll do the narratives and he'll talk. Andy and I are going to kind of tag team this one here. I'll do the narratives and he'll talk the numbers.
Is this going to be shown on the screen for the public here?
All right. So we're just going to do a 2020, 2021 budget update. Incorporated in this update is what I'm calling the draft number three as of today, 5/7/2020. Board members, you were distributed today and included in the shared folder is a more detailed summary of the draft number three budget and also including notes for each line as to the use of each line and any increase or decrease that's shown in those lines. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Stupinski to start us off.
Sure, and next slide, please, Andy. So as we've been talking throughout the budget process since January, a few known factors that we have. We know that there'll be a decrease in transportation-driven aid because we have not been using our bus transportation the last three months of the school year. We do expect potential state aid payment delays for the current fiscal year. Although I am happy to say that we did receive a payment for April last week. We do expect that there'll be the potential for state aid reductions during the course of next year. And that will be triggered by either an increase in revenues by the state of 101% above what's projected or a decrease of 99% or less. We also know that, and we're anxiously awaiting revision to our state aid calculations. We should be receiving that by on or around May 15th to let us know if there's adjustments there. We'll also see a second adjustment on or around June 30th. I'm assuming by the middle of July, we'll know if there's an adjustment again. And then finally, in the months of December, we'll expect a final adjustment for the fiscal year. Next slide. So we went into the budget planning process, again, as doing our best to maintain quality programming in all educational areas. We wanted to make sure that we realize the actual impact of state aid on the operating budget. Tried to utilize our financial plan and our fund balances or our savings accounts for the district and reserves appropriately. And also to try to take a look across all areas of the district for better efficiencies in anticipation that there may be a revenue shortfall.
Thank you, Dr. Stupinski. So this slide just shows a budget summary of the draft number three budget. The total amount of the general fund budget is currently $27.3 million. It represents a little over a million dollar increase over prior year's budget. And it represents a 4.1% increase. As of right now, the tax levy is budgeted at 2.2% increase over last year. So a total of $10,683,000. It should be noted that the current tax levy increase is below the maximum allowable tax levy increase. So the tax levy increase is actually 2.2%. And the maximum allowable tax levy increase is actually 2.3% for our district. The next slide shows both a summary of the expenditures and the estimated revenue for 2020, 2021. As you can see, starting at the top under the 2020, 2021 proposed expenditures. We're seeing a slight decrease in our general support of about $72,000. Operations and maintenance, we're seeing a reduction of approximately $176,000. Instruction, we're seeing an increase in about 2.8%. Transportation, we're seeing a fairly significant increase of about 34%. Should be noted that, you know, this increases as a result of the district being required to bid our transportation contract services out for this year. So included in the transportation general fund budget is the authorization of a first of a five-year contract for student transportation and field trips. And then the first of a four-year contract for transportation of students with disabilities to outplacement settings. The next line, employee benefits, we're showing it fairly stable, but a slight decrease. Debt service, we're showing an increase in debt service as a result of, of the issuance of a bond anticipation note. And that's as a result of the district's ongoing $12.1 million capital project. And then the final, the final line is the interfund transfers. This is what the district uses to budget for transfers to other funds, specifically the capital fund, the special aid fund and the school lunch fund. The special aid fund is used to offset the cost of mainly the district's summer school special education program, which we're responsible for about 20% of those costs. And then we have in the school lunch fund, we have to transfer a certain amount to cover the cost of student debt in the school lunch fund. And then finally, in our capital fund, we budget $100,000. That's used as an interfund transfer to fund the district's annual capital outlay project. Moving on to revenues, as we're seeing state sources. And again, this is estimated based on what we know to date. As Dr. Stupinski said in an earlier slide, we anticipate that this could be adjusted after we receive updated state aid runs because of the end of that first measurement period of April 30th. But we're showing a level funding of foundation aid, which was included in the enacted budget. And then a reduction in transportation aid as a result of, as Dr. Stupinski mentioned in earlier slides, the district not funding transportation services during the closure. So you're seeing a decrease of about $218,000. Real property taxes, again, you're seeing an increase of 2.2%, which is under the maximum allowable tax levy increase of 2.3%. We see an increase in appropriated fund balance and reserves. This is the amount that the district utilizes to cover any sort of budgetary gap between the district's estimated revenue and estimated expenditures. And then finally, other revenue is relatively flat with a slight increase of $5,000. Additionally, additionally, in the upper right-hand corner, you can see a component analysis. It shows the tri-part budget or the administrative, capital and program. Program represents 80% of our budget and administrative and capital represent both 10%. Then finally, in the bottom right-hand corner, you're seeing a revenue source analysis. And it shows the percentage of revenue that the district receives from the main categories of revenue. So 50% from New York State in the form of state aid, 39% in real property taxes and payments in lieu of taxes. 9% we use as appropriated fund balance and appropriations from reserves. And then other revenue represents approximately 1% of our revenue side of a budget.
So in keeping with our financial plan, looking at our reserves and trying to maintain those as prescribed and approved by the board. We went into our budget with a series of hopes and dreams of expanding. You remember our presentations back in February, March. Once we realized that our state aid was likely to be reduced, it has been level funded at this time. And it is 50% of our revenue stream, we needed to reduce our operating expenditures. So as we approached the program, life safety was our first concern. Looking to maintain class sizes and offerings for quality education as men, as we had mentioned earlier. So a few things that we did to adjust the initial budget that we presented is that we chose to limit the new positions that were being created. Only highly necessary items, for example, full-time special education position has been budgeted at the elementary schools. That we saw that as a real need. We've chose to hold off on the launching of our new business and ag position. We're going to hold off until the following school year on that. Through attrition, we have three teachers that we will not be filling. We're going to be shifting around some staffing assignments within the district to take care of those needs. We will be reducing our dean of students' toaster position, thus not requiring a long-term sub for that position. Be a savings there. Although we do believe through master scheduling, we'll be able to maintain that dean of students role in a halftime capacity and the other halftime returning to teaching. We will be reducing supplies, equipment and textbooks, support staff reductions, reducing some BOSI services for tech supports for a total of approximately $790,000. It's important to recognize that we did add additional special ed position, as I mentioned. We will be replacing the physical education teacher at the elementary school. We have a substantial increase coming in our special ed tuitions and costs there. As Andy had mentioned, significant increases in transportation costs with the new contract. We have increased costs due to collective bargaining agreements and obligations. And we also, with the recommendation of the board and trying to anticipate the transition of our students from being gone for six months. We have maintained our mental health services through BOSI's at a 0.6.
This is just a more detailed summary comparison of where we were at earlier in the budget process. Looking at draft number two and draft number three as of today, side by side. I've highlighted the major changes, obviously state aid. In draft number two, we were showing a potential increase in state aid of about 4%. And now we're looking at a reduction of state aid around 1.6%. And again, appropriated fund balance, we're showing some differences. You know, a slight reduction in the amount of appropriated fund balance that we're going to be using to offset the 2020, 2021 budget.
I think it's important to note that those, those, going into the fund balance is a very, very slippery slope. We build those reserves and funds for situations like we're in right now. But we cannot continue to balance our budgets through the use of fund balance over a long period of time. That's not a sustainable model. It is very much appropriate and I want to compliment Andy's work the past two years in making sure that we had this reserve and the savings account to help us through this difficult time. But going to remind the board members that difficult decisions may be ahead of us because we won't be able to do this year in, year out.
Finally, the annual meeting, as Margie had discussed earlier, has changed as a result of executive order from the governor's office. So these are just some revised dates that should be important to know. May 11th is the deadline to submit petitions for board of education candidates. May 21st is the last day for budget adoption. May 22nd is the deadline to submit the property tax report card. May 19th through the 26th, the budget statement should be made available. 28th, the budget hearing will occur at 6:00 PM via digital platform. And then finally, June 9th will be the annual meeting and the budget vote and board of member elections. The, so in regards to the budget adoption, which is slated for May 21st. Dr. Stupinski, did you want to talk a little bit more about budget adoption and what that entails?
Yes, as the, we've presented to the board and given you the information. As soon as you're comfortable with our proposed budget for next year, we would encourage scheduling a special meeting next week to adopt. Ideally before the 14th, that would give us ample time for us to prepare the materials that have to go into preparing our newsletter and the adoption and all the other steps in the process. So I would recommend that the board, considering perhaps even as that special meeting next week, maybe we can go into open session to approve the budget. So I would ask the board president, Owen, if you would consider that for next week? That would help us in our end here administratively.
And just to, just to, just to mirror what Dr. Stupinski said. The adoption of the general fund budget is authorization for the district to spend a maximum amount of money. So whatever that top dollar is, that's, that's included in the general fund budget, that the total amount. In the event that the district does have a drastic reduction in revenue as a result of a reduction in state aid. You know, the district could still, still operate, just would look to reduce expenditures as a result of, of not receiving as much revenue as we thought we would.
Okay, in the last slide? Okay, questions from the board about anything in the presentation or specifically to the materials that we shared with you?
With the last few, the end of this school year being what it is and our expenses being different than what we had budgeted last year, does any of that money carry over to this year or to next year?
Andy, it will end up in our fund balance. Andy, you want to talk about those calculations and where you're at?
Sure, yeah, any excess appropriation above and beyond revenue that we received. So any revenue that we receive above and beyond the district's actual expenses when we close the books at the end of this fiscal year will be rolled over into what's called unassigned unappropriated fund balance if the district decides not to transfer any of that to any of the available reserves that we have. So it does, it is included in the fund balance and it is included in the funds, fund balance projection that the board receives on a monthly basis. It shows what the projected amount of fund balance will be at the end of the fiscal year.
In previous years, we would have taken that additional fund balance and considered putting it into reserves for our capital, for our retirement and other purposes. This year, we're advising the board not to put those into reserves to allow us the flexibility to use that fund balance in the event that there's a significant reduction in state aid.
I'd like to ask a hypothetical question, not that this would ever happen in a million years. But what would happen if, say, the federal government did extend more money to school districts, allow more money? Will we, what will happen to that? Would it be used this year, next year? Can you expand programs? What would happen? What, what would be your best advice if that should happen?
Well, I'll start and then Andy jump in. The trigger points that the governor has put in place, in the event that there was additional state aid available through federal aid, we would see an adjustment in a positive. That we would have additional aid coming to the district that would allow us to offset our expenditures. And that will happen, it could happen this month, based on things, if the federal government was to act in before July 1st. We could see an action sometime in July. But most likely, the way that the federal government works in approving these things, we probably wouldn't see any realization of that until the end of December. Andy, did I get that right?
Oh yeah, generally. And if, if the district does receive what we would call, I guess, unanticipated revenue, again, it would be, it would be included in, in any sort of fund balance or reserve contributions at the end of this year and could be used in future years or subsequent years to offset operating expenses and such.
And if it was a huge need throughout the year, that we felt that we needed to add an additional person or a staff member for something that we were, felt that we were truly lacking, whether it be for social services or, you know, mental health or in anything. Would we be able to utilize that money for that? Or is that, or does that have to go into a separate account and not be touched until the following year?
When the, when the district authorizes and approves this budget, you cannot exceed the total amount of the budget vote, the $27 million. If we receive revenue above that, that would have to go in as anticipated revenue, as Andy mentioned, and would be put aside. Is that correct, Andy?
Yeah, additional, additional spending can be done as long as it does not exceed the authorized, total authorized amount.
Other questions from the board?
I have a question about back to the voting, so this might be for Margie. If people have to sign an affidavit and mail it in, like who's actually counting all the votes? Where are they being mailed into and like, how is that going to be kept confidential? I've never, I've never done an absentee ballot, so I don't know how any of that works.
Yes, well, we do have absentee ballots. Because I have to always mail them to anyone that's registered as a disabled person. So they automatically get, every year, they'll, they'll get an absentee ballot. And as far as opening. And as far as opening, there's, there's quite a bit of discussion going on about that right now too, between clerks and, and attorneys and, um, uh, some are of, so do we have our, uh, election inspectors that I normally use that sit at the tables, you know, um, where people sign in or whatever, uh, however, they, uh, it's not a good idea given, um, uh, you know, a lot of them are, um, elderly and so you don't really want them to, uh, come out. Um, so we, there's just got, it's, obviously Carrie, it's, it's like all in the discussion phase right now. But as far as privacy, um, usually one person like opened, like, uh, opens the envelope and takes out the ballot, hands it. You know, the two, it, it, um, it's checked against like that you did indeed send it out. But, um, the two don't usually stick together as soon as that envelope is opened.
Okay, I know. So Andy, if you're counting all these ballots.
Andy, wait, what?
I thought he raised his hand like he had to count them all.
Andy? It, it might. We're figuring that out, right, Andy?
Yeah, yeah, it might be a team effort, uh, I, I might not say, um, but, uh, yeah, yeah, so, um, as far as counting, um, Margie and I had, has, have had discussions about how we're going to tally if, you know, if we are going to be counting. And, um, I'd probably end up developing a, uh, an Excel spreadsheet or a program that would allow us to easily track, um, yes, no's and then the other propositions.
And, and board member, uh, votes as well, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
Could be a long night with lots of pizza.
I guess what I'm asking is, would it be possible, like, when the ballots get mailed in, that they actually get run through one of those machines? So that, that counts them so that you don't really, because I would think like, if you're, if you're opening all these envelopes and counting them by hand, like, you're going to get exposed to all kinds of.
And, you know, and Carrie, you, this, you are asking exactly all the questions that we are asking as well. Um, there's information that the machines can't count a ballot if it's folded. Um, then there's, um, there's definitely, uh, should they, the return ones be like the, um, where you can tear off a strip and, and, and seal it rather than a person like actually sealing it themselves, if you know what I mean?
Licking the envelope?
Yes, exactly, right, so, you know, I, I just want to remind, um, Board and our audience that, um, this was literally dropped on us Friday, uh, let's see, Hank, when did you, you text me? Five, four o'clock, four o'clock on Friday? Um, so, but Carrie, these are exactly the questions that we're asking as well and, um.
This is statewide too, so everybody's kind of in the.
Everybody, yes, and I, I actually participated in a webinar two days ago. And we had to wait probably about 15 minutes for everyone to join the, the webinar. Because when somebody does, it's like so-and-so has joined the conference, so-and-so has joined the conference, you know, it's like a little robot. And we have 15 minutes because it was over 150 participating in the webinar. Yeah, so.
Just one, uh, confirmation, Hank and Andy, short of our, or aside from our, um, reductions, uh, through retirement. There will be no additional teaching staff reductions.
At this time, there would be no reduction in staff of people that are currently employed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I noticed that same thing and I, I was baffled by the fact that we have reductions of $790,000 and yet nobody is really, uh, impacted. And, and I think that our program for our students is minimally impacted if, if at all. I find that impressive, there's other districts who would envy our, our position, so. I, my view and correct me if I'm wrong, is that which we have done as a, a district and with our administration. Um, those who have contributed to the wise decisions about making the budget, not just this year, but over the past several years. Our, our taxpayers have, have, uh, you know, been wise too in their voting, so, um, obviously to, to get it, get us in this position. So I, you know, I'm appreciative of what we have and I, considering what's coming down the pipe, um, the unknowns. Uh, everybody's preparing for kind of the, the worst case scenarios. And, uh, I, I see other districts and being in communication with them, you know, in, in this area, anywhere from 200,000 to a million dollars in, in reductions. And we're right up there at the $790,000 mark for our small school district. And it's impressive that, that we are able to, uh, you know, maintain jobs and, and good program for our students, so, well, I, I say well done.
Yeah, just to make sure that we're, uh, consistent here, there are no instructional positions that, that people will not be displaced from those positions. But there may be individuals, um, if we do not see retirements and transitions in the service unit, that may be displaced.
Right, my, I say it correctly right now, that, I, I apologize for that, you're right, but very minimally at, at best anyway, so. Still kudos to you guys, to the team that has helped out with that.
Andy, I had, um, asked you a question before and I, I think maybe other people might, might want to just be clarified on it. Um, that, um, A1310, 490, the BOSI Services Business Office, I think you know what I'm talking about. It says 109% um, percent change. Can you just explain, um, is this a service we've always used and why is the jump? And why is it different from last year as opposed to this year? Just so it's clarification.
Sure, yeah, uh, that code includes, uh, BOSI Services for the business office. And one of the services is Questar State Aid Planning, uh, which is a fairly stabilized service. It helps the district plan for state aid and capital projects, they're a great resource. Um, the second service is, um, the district's printing service. Um, so the past couple of years, um, the district has been, um, putting more, um, putting more resources into printing through Erie One BOSI, so the district can receive aid on that. Um, and so, uh, this is an as-built service. So, uh, each time that we go to the printers at Erie One BOSI's, we're billed for it. Generally, the district, um, has just been, uh, transferring funds to cover those as-built amounts from the printing services. Um, but in order to better represent the district's actual costs in that code, um, uh, we decided to budget appropriately for it in the 1310, 490. So you see a significant increase there.
So if it's not used, you don't use it, you, you only are billed for it if you use it. So if you, if you cut back at all in some respect with, with printing or find some other avenue to be able to, um, provide that service, then you won't have to be billed for that amount.
Absolutely.
It's kind of a drop in the bucket compared to millions of dollars, but I'm just looking at that.
Absolutely correct, yeah, absolutely correct, um, and yeah, it's, it's just an estimate based on the, what we've used, uh, so far this year and what we plan on using for next year.
Other question?
I have one more question about the votes, I'm still trying to wrap my head around this whole thing. When will we actually know, like, how long is it going to take to count all these things? Like, when will we know if the budget passed and all of that?
So it's five o'clock, we can't take them after that, um, it's not like tax collection where a postmark counts. Um, it's no different than, uh, regular absentee ballots, um, you know, other, um, votes in the past. They have to be received by five o'clock, so that we, we, that's a known, we know that. Um, and I, I guess the quickest answer would be, depends on how many we get back, um.
Can you count them and receive them or do you, or can you only start counting them at five o'clock that day?
Uh, once again, that's another thing that is being discussed, uh, between clerks and attorneys. Um, yeah, lots of different, um, schools of thought going on about that, um. I'll, yeah. It's a learning experience.
We, we will be certain to update the board as soon as we have more information and guidance on this. Uh, what you saw in the presentation with the timeline is the best that we've got right now. Uh, as more clarification comes, I'll be certain that we include that in our weekly update to the board.
So in terms of the budget, um, itself, um, obviously there's still some unknowns or some, some cards that need to be put on the table that we're not sure of, including, you know, revenue holdbacks from New York State. Going into next year, I got to believe the transportation may look a little differently. And if that's the case, is there any inkling as to what the cost increases might be there? Is that factored into some of these expenditures that we're putting in our budget? See, or at least give some insight as to what cards are still not on the table that we need to see to make those decisions or for your office to make that decision.
Well, I can start and I'll let Andy, uh, pick up the end there. We are just now beginning to try and, the term is reimagine what the next school year is going to be looking like. Uh, I've had conversations, a couple of them at this time with our transportation director about how might we be looking at social distancing? How might we be handling the sanitation and the cleaning of our buses? Uh, in order to do it by the book as we know it right now, we would literally double the cost of our transportation. We're not sure that that's real. Uh, and so we're going to be looking at cost-effective, uh, options for ourselves, which, uh, may require us to shift some of our philosophies and, and policies around transporting students. We may require some, um, individuals to, um, look at alternative ways. Uh, one of the creative solutions, we're having families sit next to each other, uh, so that that would reduce the number of seats that we'd have to occupy. Uh, we really don't have an answer right now and to be quite honest, we haven't gotten much guidance at all, uh, in a finalized form or directives from the state. We have received several thoughts and theories from the CDC and from the district superintendents. Uh, we haven't quite sorted through that, we're going to get through the next couple of weeks to close out school. And administrators are now just beginning to talk about what are we going to be doing about, uh, cleaning our spaces, teaching our students, feeding our students, uh, transporting our students, I mean, the list goes on and on and on. Andy, anything else on your end from the transportation?
Uh, no, like you said, Dr. Stupinski, uh, we've yet to hear any, um, any word about any specific mandates. Um, so we're not really able to put a dollar value, um, at any of those mandates at this point, but we'll certainly, uh, we will certainly watch that closely.
Other questions from the board? Tom, I thought I saw you asking a question with your mute button on it, did you get it answered?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Hey, if there's nothing else, back to you, uh, for President Owen.
All right, well, um, thank you everybody for your time, um, you know, I, this is normally the time we'd have a public forum. The Board of Education values comments and input from our district residents. Those who would like to share comments for the record can email the district clerk prior to meeting, uh, prior to the meeting at mmasters@royhart.org and use the subject line "public forum." Uh, keep in mind that comments are to be relative to issues and not individual people. And we do, uh, read and, and, um, process your, your, uh, comments. I don't know that there's a need for an executive session, um, is there somebody who would like to motion for an executive session, uh, with a, an appropriate reason?
There's no need for my end.
Okay, I don't know that the board does either, I know that, you know, as a reminder, we're meeting, I think, next Wednesday, not as an executive session, but, uh, gets us together. That being said, could we have a motion then to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion, Tom, I'll second, and with that, um, we just, uh, need to approve it, we can all just say aye in this case at the same time and we'll sign out. So, aye?
Aye.
Okay, and goodbye, everybody.